This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Good evening. I'd like to call the July 14th, 2021 special meeting of the North Haven Board of Education to order at 6:00 PM. Thank you for those in the audience for coming. Tonight's meeting is going to begin with approximately 30 minutes of public comment. But priority for public comment tonight is going to be given to those who have not had an opportunity to make public comments to the board in the past. Those who have made public comments in the past to us at our last few meetings are encouraged, if they have any new information that they want to share, I will call on you after we have gone to anyone who has not made a public comment in the past. So with that, I'm going to start with public comments. So I ask someone to raise their hand who has not made public comment before. Hi, can you state your name? Thank you. Yeah, we have a limit of five minutes per person.
Okay, thank you. I've never been to a Board of Education meeting, so this is a pleasure for me.
Thank you for coming. Can we have your name?
Barbara Bruin.
Thanks.
Barnum Town Avenue, North Haven.
Okay.
And just to start, my dad always told me that I always had to put in two cents every time I make a comment. So Dad, I'm putting in my two cents right now. So here I go. And bear with me. I feel, in a sense, I'm outnumbered, but I'm here on behalf of speaking for the Indian mascot. And I start with pride, strength, endurance, dignity is how I view the Native Americans. What better attributes to instill in our children in the hopes they will imitate them in the present and forward into their future lives? I have never disparaged or looked with ill repute upon the Native Americans. Unfortunately, I feel your agenda seems to appease a select few that endorse the "cancel culture." I'm a traditionalist with the belief Native Americans should not have more land taken from them as history has shown. Let us keep this part of North Haven sacred to the Indians so they can continue to spiritually live with the dignity and respect they deserve and as an inspiration to all. I believe North Haveners have always embraced the Indian mascot, honored it, respected it, and never disparaged it. My children and grandchildren looked up to the Indian mascot and participated in sports proudly, displaying their mascot. As a taxpaying resident for 62 years, I ask instead of a vestige, may our mascot remain. For the Indians are our history, our very identity. What a wonderful opportunity to teach the children our Native American history as part of the school's curriculum instead of burying their history. I vote for the perpetuation of the Indian mascot. After all, we have Quinnipiac University, Quinnipiac Bridge, Quinnipiac River, Monauese and Quinnipiac Avenues, Monauese School. And just for the record, I'm proud of the Indian heritage I have. Also, apparently, your collective minds have determined the fate of the Indian mascot, disallowing democracy to prevail by not having a referendum for residents of North Haven that amount to more than 23,000 people. So I've had my two cents worth for what it's worth, and I would also like to show this on camera if possible. And this is the Thanksgiving Day of back of the man at Mike Vanacore Field, November 24th, 1994, and also the high school folder. And if I may, at the end of the meeting, I'd like to leave this with you for the minutes on record.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
May I have another person who has not previously spoke to the Board of Education who would like to speak? I'm sorry, Jenny?
Good evening. I was on the Board of Ed when the discussion of the Indian mascot came up in 2015.
Excuse me, Jenny. Excuse me. Excuse me. Barbara?
Sir.
Sir, can you reach out to everyone after the meeting? We have people talking. Thank you. Thank you.
I know how difficult this topic was back then and how much I felt the residents who were attached to current mascot and how much pressure I felt. I understand how hard your job is when a controversial issue arises and want to thank you for the discussions you've had over the last past year. It's clear the board members have spent a great deal of time reading and researching the topic. Sorry. I want to thank you for your vote in removing that Indian mascot image in your May meeting. I'm speaking tonight to request that you take the next step of retiring the Indian mascot name. When I was on the board, although a formal vote was never taken, the decision was made to remove the image from any of the uniforms that were ordered, as well as from the new building constructions. Although the feeling is that removing the image removes the harm, the board has no control over the parent groups groupings, doing clothing, signs, and other team-related items with the Indian mascot name remains. My children were in North Haven Public School until 2015. I attended events where residents used face paint and some some World War headdress in order for the board to be able to prevent the harm of the Indian mascot image on Native students. The name will also need to be retired. Brave students have come forward and informed the board of negative impact the mascot had on their ability to be a part of the community, as well as their ability to feel safe and free from bullying. As some of you know, I'm invested in policy and believe that mission beliefs and vision the board voted to adopt should guide the decision-making process. When looking at the beliefs section of the policy menu, a few statements stand out. "We believe an understanding of and a respect for diverse beliefs, cultures, backgrounds, abilities, perspective enrich the lives and learning environment for all students." "We believe our educational aim will best be achieved in the atmosphere of mutual respect, concern, and support." It is clear from the testimony provided by the Native American students and their families in North Haven. In order to show an understanding of and a respect for the beliefs and cultures, we need to listen to their experience. Some have shared their experience of feeling excluded and being bullied. To achieve an atmosphere of mutual respect and concern, we need to honor the respect that has been brought to the board on many occasions over the past six years. I am here tonight to support the students and, plus their family, and request that you take the remaining step of retiring the Indian mascot name. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Anyone else who wants to speak or has not spoke to the Board of Ed before?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Wendy Marks, and I am a Native American person who grew up in the town of North Haven. My native name is Summer Wind. I am an alumni of the North Haven school system, a concerned citizen, and a professional educator. I'm speaking tonight to share my personal experience with you and why the word "Indians" is detrimental to me. I thank you for retiring the mascot logo, the character. But there's still a very important decision to make tonight, and that's on the use of the word "Indians." From my point, the name "North Haven Indians" has never been honored to our people. It is hurtful, and it reflects systematic racism. North Haven has used it historically to mock a population of indigenous people. Let me explain to you how and why North Haven has inflicted so much emotional pain and hurt on me by calling themselves Indians. My experience as a young indigenous student at North Haven Junior High School and high school is not unique just to me. For four long years, every day, I walked down the hall to see the images and the name "Indians." I was taunted by the imagery of the Native American Chief Sajum and by being called Indians at the town. It made me feel isolated, embarrassed, and ashamed to admit my native culture. When I was in high school, the mascot was changed and painted on the cafeteria walls too. When I asked why, I was told by the principal, "It is to change to make it look better." What was meant by this, it was created more to look like the Hollywood portrayal of a Native American, not the Eastern Woodlands Indians or Native Americans that reside in this area. Again, that's a huge insult to my culture. As I sat in school to be educated, the flashback of how my ancestors were beheaded and tortured from colonizers, yes, on this very land of North Haven, came to me on a daily basis. I could not attend or participate in sporting or extracurricular events labeled as "Indians" because it is seen in my culture as a betrayal to my ancestors and to my tribal members. Being called "Indian" was a bad thing in my culture. The staff, the students, my peers, they taunted me as they pretended to dance around in a circle, patting their mouths, calling out as if to imitate a Native American person in a very sacred ceremony, screaming, "We are the Indians!" This was encouraged at sporting events, at pep rallies, and even in the school. How would that make any of you feel if you were subjected daily to your sacred and religious practices being mocked or made fun of? If that has never happened to you, let me tell you, it does not feel good. It is traumatic, and it is not acceptable. However, as a child and as a student, I was ignored, leaving my voice powerless. No one wanted to hear how it made me feel back then. Being called Indians to me is just like being called a racist name from a person not in your culture. Think about that for a minute. Your sacred religious practices being made fun of, you being called something totally different incorrectly out of your name is a word that does not honor or reflect my true heritage, and it has happened my entire life living in North Haven. The word "Indians" is inaccurate, emotionally damaging, and it has characterized North Haven for far too long. As we know now, there's not a large surviving population of indigenous people, especially here in the town of North Haven. But we are still here, and our voices do matter. Being Indian, being called Indian is not a term of endearment or a term that honors my people. To be clear, continuing to use the words "Indians" is incorrect, offensive, wrong, derogatory, abusive, emotionally damaging, and it reflects true racism. And we cannot continue just because a select few hold on to that word as a form of nostalgia. North Haven is a beautiful town. It has generations of families living here. And yes, I too, like so many others, wanted to live here as an adult and raise my family. However, I chose not to because I did not want my child to have the same feelings of isolation, embarrassment, and torture about our indigenous culture law in school. This is what your mascot image and the name "Indians" has done to me and other indigenous people who live in North Haven. As a professional educator, I believe that schools should always be safe places for all of these students. Schools should be places where all students feel accepted and encouraged to reach their fullest potential. This is why it's important to me, for me again, to express the retirement of not only the caricature, but the name "Indian." The name "Indians" must go so that it can begin to heal and demonstrate to the next generation that the choice of words has a powerful impact. We have a wonderful opportunity here to teach authentic American history, the truth.
Wendy?
I respectfully request that the Board of North Haven Education and the North Haven residents rise to this occasion and find a new name that honors the entire body population, student body population, past, present, and future.
Thank you, Wendy.
North Haven is full of intelligent and educated people, and I am sure that North Haven residents can work together to find a new name that is not racially offensive and will not hurt anyone and reflect the dignity and honor of its team image. As we have learned over the past year from all of the protesting across the nation, North Haven knows better, and North Haven has to do better. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chris Hoffman, CT News Journal. I respectfully request that I just get people's names after this meeting.
I would like to ask you if you can get them after this meeting adjourns.
It could be difficult. People could leave. I could forget who said what.
They've said their names.
I'm surprised.
They've said their names, and we have it in our meeting minutes.
I don't know how they spell their names.
Okay, we will get that to you.
Can you put a pad on the notepad? Can you just put a pad on the table?
That would be fine.
Yes, good idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. It is very important to the Board of Education to hear and listen to each person. So this is why we did not want any interruptions when you wanted to speak to other people. But thank you. Well, that's a good idea for putting down the name. Thank you.
It's also very important for us to do with the names of people.
We would be happy to keep those to you after the meeting. Is there anyone else outside of who has not had an opportunity to do a public comment to the Board of Ed previously? Okay. Please. Yes.
My name is Allison Brice. Very proud.
Do you mind writing your name, Allison? Oh, you can't. We'll write your name. I'm sorry.
I don't have anything to add. I support the retirement of this name. Just hold up, moving the essay here. Simply, I think that mascots are supposed to rally people, rally the town, rally the teams, and this mascot and name is not doing that anymore. So even just for that basic reason, it is definitely time to retire it because I, for one, want to support sports teams in town, and I don't want to do that with this name. So I just wanted to put that out there, that the point of a mascot, what it's supposed to do, and this one is not doing it anymore. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anyone outside?
My name is Melody Gallagher. I'm Tali Gallagher's sister. And I'm here to speak in support of retiring the mascot and name. I'm a teacher in New Haven, a resident in New Haven. And recently, we also have had issues in our Board of Education that have dealt with issues that are going to need restorative justice. This is an issue that is going to need restorative justice. So no matter what you decide to make, I implore you to bring that into your district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who has not spoken to the Board of Ed before?
Don't need to write your name.
Yeah, please write your name. Did that woman, I know Gallagher was her last name. Did she write her name?
No. Okay, I have a question. Are only people who are residents of this town able to speak on this topic?
No, I think they've
Anyone can come in from outside and have their say in North Haven.
There were Ms. Marks, and I think you're referring to Ms. Marks who just spoke.
I can't remember.
I said, I think you were referring to Ms. Marks who just spoke because she had said that she grew up in this town and no longer lives here. Typically, we do prefer people from our town who are currently living here to speak. But Ms. Marks let us know at the end of her conversation that she is no longer a resident of North Haven and why. We have someone else ready to speak.
Young lady who's a Native American, she's not a resident of this town either. And I have been to many meetings.
Excuse me, John. I didn't just acknowledge that.
Most meetings come from a resident of North Haven. Planning Exfoliation, Conservation Commission, if you're a resident, you cannot voice your opinion at the meeting. I don't understand how this commission is being run.
So, hi. I am a resident of North Haven, and my children attend schools here. My three children attend schools. And I've listened, I've watched, I've spent more time on NHTV, watching some of the comments, and it's tough. Right? It's tough watching the comments and understanding that you're putting your children in a place where there's towns' residents that have such strong opinions about something where we're moving forward. I understand what it used to be, and I understand what it means. I was a Wilbur Cross cheerleader, governor, not really exciting mascot. But I was a cheerleader and a track star, and, you know, it was more than being a Wilbur Cross governor. It was about the students. It was about the camaraderie. It was about the community. And, you know, this year, my girl, they're going into third grade. My girl twin asked, she was like, "Mommy, can I do cheerleading?" And I know it's not a part of the school, but it's the fact that she would be cheering as a North Haven Indian. And it was a really tough conversation because she wanted to be with her friends, right? So a tough conversation to have with a then seven-year-old. "No, baby, we can't do it." And when you sat down and explained to her the why, we chose to have her cheer actually privately, right? So I'm paying a lot of money to have a seven-year-old cheer just so that she can get the experience, but to do right. Sometimes we just have to do what's right. It's not and it's not about being popular or about history. There's a lot in history that wasn't right, and I think we have an opportunity to make things right. So with that, I just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other North Haven resident who has not spoken to the Board of Ed previously that would like to speak?
Yes, since you're restricting it to North Haven residents, I feel I need to speak up because I am a North Haven resident. I just found out about this about an hour ago.
Can we have your name, ma'am?
My name is Kirsten Hope McFadden. I do have some strong feelings about this. My children went to school at Green Acres, and then my youngest child decided to go to Eastums. I sent my middle school, my oldest son wanted to go to well, he got to Eastums, and there was a whole issue there, but he went to North Haven Middle School. I ended up pulling him out of North Haven Middle School because I felt they were holding him back in mass, and I put him in Eastums. The seventh-grade teacher actually told him that when he told her that he that he was going to be taking eighth-grade algebra, he was going to be taking algebra in the eighth grade the next year, she said, "You shouldn't be." And he said, "Yeah, yeah, yeah. I tested into algebra for eighth grade," and she said, "Well, you shouldn't be." Well, I was highly upset, and I said, "I made my right decision. You're coming with me to Eastums." He graduated from Eastums with 27 college credits. So that was why my children moved out of North Haven to go to Eastums in New Haven. But I did let my children play soccer. I let my children play soccer. They have played soccer since the oldest one was six, the youngest one was four. They played for the middle school. My oldest son was captain of the middle school team in his eighth-grade year, and he was also captain of the high school team in his senior year. But it was really hard, and I never, I never ever, ever bought any of the paraphernalia. And the reason I didn't buy is because I didn't want anything that said "North Haven Indians" on it. I didn't buy the jogging suit. I didn't buy Al's like you, and I'm not buying anything that says "North Haven Indians" on it. I mean, we wouldn't want anything that said "North Haven White People," would we? How would we feel about that? So I usually am not at a loss for words. I wasn't going to speak because, like I said, just fine about that. Fine about today. But since I'm never at a loss for words usually, I thought I would speak and let you know how it feels. And since we're only limited in this to North Haven residents, I have been one for over 20 years. My children are born and raised in North Haven, and I was really, you know, I just never ever participated. Everyone was so excited about the paraphernalia. Everybody was buying all this stuff. And I just silently said, "I will not buy it." So please take that into consideration. When you're limited, you're putting that sign on there. And even take that into consideration, not even when you're talking about Native American and calling it "North Haven Indians." What about the Indian population? Like I said, you wouldn't want a mascot being white people, would you? What do you think they feel like? But since they're a minority in this town, they just go ahead, get the education as best they can, and move on, and are afraid to speak up. So I speak for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have a lot to say.
Can we have your name, though?
My name is Hazetta Jackson. H-A-Z-E-double-T-A. Jackson, as in Michael. My family has lived in North Haven for about 70 years. I married him. I've been here for almost 60. These beautiful women of color you see here are my daughters. They're all educated. They were born and raised in North Haven and they've all graduated college, obtained master's, diploma, black. The important thing is, when we look at racial culture, let's look at it correctly. Indians are from India. We are not from America. This is the name forced on them by those who came into the country. They were mistreated. They are still mistreated. We have a multicultural in our own. We respect all of them. We wouldn't insult anyone. That includes our white heritage as well. So let's think about what's really real. Let's think about having sports teams that actually really celebrate the sport. Do not put anyone down. Do not infer this is a wild team of people. Let's talk about spunk, fighting spirit, yam-yam-yam. Let's not talk about our mascot, who is always something below humans. That's my point of view, and I think I speak for most people with common sense. So let's love one another and do it properly, and I think you can come up with a fantastic name for your team that does not have to continue to perpetuate ancient customs of folks who moved here many years ago. Let's just do it right. We have a better town. We can live that way.
Thank you. Amanda, would you, oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Go ahead. Sir? Yes?
My name is Eddie Jackson, and I'm in my 80s. And I grew up pretty much on Rock Road in North Haven. And if you check the records, most of that land, Wall Road and Weathers Road and whatever, that's all Native Americans. that's all Native Americans. We've lived there. Oh, I don't know. We, we actually acquired the land from natives. So, I really don't know the, the length of it, but it's over eighty years that, that we, we are, uh, Native Americans who've lived there. And that was, if you check back the records, you'll find that, uh, Jackson and Anderson were there over eighty years ago. And my father, who, uh, gave it to me, lived there and in New Haven. I want to thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. and Mrs. Jackson, and there was another woman I saw who had a cane. I don't know if you're aware, we do have handicap access, so you don't have to go up and down those stairs.
Uh, that's why we were late.
Okay. I, so what we can do at the end of the meeting, I'll have someone guide you downs, down there, uh, just so you.
Awesome. You can light a hole.
Yeah, yeah, I'll do, so we can let you know when I want, I can, yeah, I saw somebody else with a cane there, uh, there.
Okay, it's alright. It's fine.
Um, so, once again, before I call on other people, is there anyone else who has never spoken to the Board that would like to speak to the Board who lives in North Haven? Amanda, can you check if anyone new came in the hallway? Go ahead, okay. So, no?
Uh, Nick Gill, and I do live in North Haven, uh, since there is some kind of residency requirement, I guess, about speaking.
We don't know if there, there is or not, but I'm just, go right.
Uh, no, it's not important, because, but because the, uh, narrative that most of the people that are opposed to the, uh, Indians name or from out of town is just ludicrous. So, I am from North Haven, and I am opposed, and I just want to say that something to not lose sight of here is that the town stands to lose eighty-seven thousand dollars if we keep the nickname because of the recent law that was passed in June. So, I mean, there should be a layup vote anyway, it should be a very simple decision anyway, but this should be nine to nothing. Nine to nothing, because otherwise, we, the town stands to lose a lot of money.
Thank you. What is your name?
Nick Gill.
Sir, we didn't get your name.
Nick, Nick Gill.
Nick Gill?
Yep.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jeff Hutchins, I'm a North Haven resident, and, uh, been for many years, grew up on Skiff Street. I'm now living, uh, uh, on Roger Avenue. And, uh, I just want to speak in support of changing the name and the mascot, uh, to my friends in North Haven who have spoken very eloquently about this. And, uh, I think this is long overdue to do the right thing in this regard. Uh, the two thousand and five, uh, American Psychiatric Association, uh, study that called for the retirement of these names is pretty compelling to me. Uh, and I read it, you know, or I read the abstract at the beginning, it's, it's, it's a, it's a no-brainer. I've, I've heard lots of compelling arguments from others. I think it's the right thing to do, I, I was moving back to North Haven in two thousand and fifteen with this. Uh, I witnessed some really distressing things at a meeting that was like this from afar, um, and it's really surprising that we are, uh, still having this debate. And I hope that we can just do the right thing, I think it's the right thing to do, and it's been the right thing, uh, for a very long time. And I want to see the best for my town. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, um, Joan, did you have something to say? Did you want to make public comment tonight?
Yes, I did.
Go ahead.
But she spoke with the board.
Pardon me?
And she spoke with the board of Ed.
I'm sorry, I can't.
I have.
Because she spoke against the Board of Ed.
I have.
Yeah, I think we're, we, we got everybody, oh, okay, one more, a couple, okay, sorry about that, I apologize, I didn't see you there.
I have a. Okay.
Yeah, um, my name is Midai Espanda, I live right here on Maple Avenue. Uh, we've been here for nineteen, twenty years or so. My kids went through Ridge Road, through the middle school, through the high school, uh, through the university now. Uh, we definitely also would like to see the name, the mascot, all of that, um, tired. I think it's long overdue, um, it's embarrassing frankly, and, uh, I think, as the rest of us said, it's, it's time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else? I thought I had everybody, so my apologies. Okay, you may speak, Joan.
Okay. Uh, Joan Zurg, I live on Claudia Road, North Haven. Um, I have a letter that I'd like to address to the chairperson, Anita Anderson, and members of the North Haven Board of Ed, and the North Haven taxpayers. Relative to the eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars that we're gonna lose, uh, by if we keep, if we kept a mascot, that could be corrected, uh, with permission from the tribal council. They'll allow the towns that have permission from the local council, uh, to keep refunding. But I'd like to comment on the request of Board of Ed Chairman Anita Anderson via our selectman, Michael Frida, to have a referendum on the subject of our mascot Indian name. She flatly turned him down, I also requested a referendum, it's the only fair way to do this, to no avail. At the June tenth meeting, she finally answered why she was against giving an informational referendum. She stated only she, only she has all the knowledge on the subject of the Indians in her folders. And apparently, she does not think the twenty-nine thousand town taxpayers are informed enough to vote on the subject. How many of these knowledgeable people in her folder are taxpaying residents in North Haven? And yet, with all this knowledge, why doesn't she know that we have twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine residents, taxpayers in North Haven, not twenty-nine thousand? I also question why the Board of Education is blaming a mythical mascot for the harassment a few Indian black students have complained of. Why haven't the superintendent and principals done their job and punished these students? Do they really exist? She also stated she excluded the emails that were insulting, rude, et cetera, from the record. Why? Were they the ones in support of keeping the mascot Indian name? That is illegal to withhold them, our town permissions never omit anything that is said into them for the record. It's all recorded in the record. I feel like this is a Marxist regime, she's an advocate of one-person rule, which would be considered dictatorship in third-world countries. This is a town-wide issue in democracy. All the North Haven taxpayers should have a right to vote on it. Our tax dollars go into the education budget like everybody else. I question the legality and actions of the chairperson in the Board of Ed Committee. I object to the ruling at all on the dismissal of the mascot Indian name on athletic uniforms, as well as any other educational issue that comes before them. The entire commission should be shut down, brought before the Lord of Ethics, and voted out. I'd like to submit this letter to the commission, but I also have, in addition to that, I have the grandest of the state, which is already mentioned, the eighty-six thousand, well, I have that documented. That's what we would be, would be taken from us if we kept, we kept the mascot, we're not going before the council. But I have information from the Macon Yacht Club in a newsletter, which is a very short article, of which my husband remembers. The Macon Yacht Club is on the Quinnipiac River off of Front Street in New Haven. And our historian, Tony Greckel, made a big comment in our last newsletter. He stated, our club is surrounded by history. From the small wooded granite island across the river that has a ten-thousand, ten-thousand-year-old history of the Quinnipiac Native Americans fishing and planting. The oyster industries date back as far as eighteen thirty thirty-eight. Now, we, with our small minds, are going to completely wipe out any vestige of these Quinnipiac Indians of any over ten thousand years. And already, the re- only reason that there are not a lot of Quinnipiac Indians around, yet we have named half the town the Quinn University after Quinnipiac, the reason they're not around at this day and age is because the English settler, settlers, gave the tribe blankets, a campervan with small pots, and literally wiped out thousands of their tribe to get their land. How sad is that? Now, we're finishing the job by totally obliterating their memory through the towns in North Haven. I ask you, what else are we going to wipe out besides the Quinnipiac Indians, may I ask? The name Indian does not just represent India, one hundred thousand different names, it represents Quinnipiac. That is our Indian, it was our Indian. Now, beside, what else, besides the Indians that are being wiped out, Quinnipiac Indians are gonna be wiped out, is the Tomahawk Club, which has been a good fundraiser for many years, is that gonna be done away with? Or the beautiful town seal in our selectman office? Are you going to do away with that also? I mean, there's no way to what you're gonna do away with, or will you all be too busy? Every one of you cramming critical race theory down the student's throats. Then I'd like to see everybody in this room with children in the school coming here and kissing up to you like they do now. Thank you.
Um, actually, you know what, my daughter has her hand up.
Okay.
And I think it's actually more important that if she wants to speak, I'm gonna let her speak first, because she is a North Haven High School student, so, and I think it's brave of her to speak, so I'd like to hear what you have to say. Because she's actually choosing to leave North Haven as a white student because of the things that she sees that happens in the community, so, go ahead, Emma, if you'd like to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
You can take off your mask for a bit.
Yeah, and if you can state your names.
I don't really think that it would be erasing their culture or anything if they have argued against it and talked about how much trauma it caused them, so, I don't think we're erasing them from histories if they obviously have a lot against it, and they've had to restrict themselves to certain things in the school, like playing for sports and stuff because of the mascot, so, I don't know, I don't want to go all this into it. Just that if it's causing people trouble, and we want to create a more accepting environment, I don't think that we should keep it.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments.
And I think the first.
And let her mom come on.
Yeah, and I think the first thing that I wanna, I wanna say is, I wanna address the board in saying, this would not have, you know what, no one spoke while you were speaking, and I think the one thing that I want to make clear, and I want to keep this very respectful, is that you were kind of talking behind me and kind of reading notes and stuff, but I don't think you heard what everyone was saying in respect to, when you were talking about Indians and different things, there were people in this audience that were expressing the fact that it's a derogatory term that hurts people. We are all entitled to our own opinion, but I think the only thing is, we just ask that everyone listens and be, and be heard. And so, a- all we ask in the same is, you, everyone can have their opinion for or against the mascot, but the courtesy is to, to hear everyone, and that is what community, that's what community is all about.
I heard people muttering quite a few things while I was talking, so, I'm sorry, I will not talk, but I did hear a lot of comments right there.
Okay. No, but I think all I'm saying, and what I think every community needs, and for Anita and the entire board, I'm really grateful, this has taken a long time, and I will say that everyone on the board has done a really incredible job. And one of the reasons it's taken so long is because I kept watching Anita in these meetings say, I want more information, I want to hear from everybody. At some of the meetings, Anita even said, I keep hearing from all these people that are for changing the mascot, but in this meeting, I have not heard from the other side. Does anybody want to comment from the other side? At this meeting today, this room is full of people who have commented before, but she gave people the chance who have never commented before to comment. So, it's kind of hard to say that community has not been involved in the process. If you've been involved in the process all along, you would know who Talia is and who Talia's sister is, and some of the, the painstaking steps that have been done. If you look at Jen and Amanda and, um, Dot, you'll kind of know their stance on things and what they've supported, and that they've done research for both sides. So, even though that they're in support of changing the mascot, they sure as heck have done their homework to make sure they've looked at the other side. Because Alani has been looking at how to work together to try to make the tribal things work, and we haven't seen that the tribes are willing to do that. So, if you've been with this beginning to end, you've sort of seen everybody's effort in doing this. Um, and I applaud everybody for their work in trying to make it a fair and diligent process. But I also think at the end of the day, to truly be a community, you have to listen to your members. For people to be excluded and to not play sports, and to not create an inclusive environment, whether it be for race, for culture, for sexual orientation, for ability, for anything. I used to work in North Haven as a speech pathologist, so I know that aspect of it. You know, we want to create an inclusive culture, and part of community is listening to the members of, of your community, and trying to make it the best place for everyone. Um, you know, money and budget aside, make it for the right decision and stuff, but I think we have to start listening to our community members, and people have spoken, and the comment about the mascot and just bringing our town together, we kind of need a win to bring everybody together and, and kind of let the division stop. But it makes me sad that people are coming, and they're literally sitting here telling you how they've been impacted, and for us to just kind of go, huh, and to say Indian is not a word. I mean, we're fighting over a word that's, that's not a word. And they're telling you it's an offensive slur, so if you think of every slur that belongs to your own culture, or something that you wouldn't want to be called, I just don't think we should be fighting that hard, or we shouldn't be feeling all this animosity toward each other if, if we're truly a community, and we want what's best for our kids. And you know what, I know my kids come home on the bus, and they talk about racial slurs. Um, interesting that you held up the poster of the North Haven Cheshire game. One of my best friend's sons lives in Cheshire, he's a black athlete. They hate playing in North Haven, because when they come to North Haven, her son gets called the N-word on our football field. Every time. This is one of my best friends. So, you want the proof? There's, there's the proof. I'm not lying, things happen, but they happen in all towns. So, we can always do better, so North Haven is a great place. But we can always do better, so, let's make it an even better place.
Thank you. Thank you. I didn't get your name, um.
Kristy Gill, Grover.
Thank you.
I'll let you go.
Um, there's other people, Joan, that'd like to speak, um, so I'd let them speak first.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Hi, um, I'm Benjamin Rudikoff, I'm a student at North Haven High School, so, yes, I'm a North Haven resident. And, um, until a few years ago, I was in a position that I'm sure a lot of you Board of Ed members were until recently, where I didn't really see a problem with the North Haven Indian name. I didn't even see a problem with, like, Washington Redskins, because we were more effective. But when you look at the signs, and you hear people's terrible personal stories from even within this town, it's clear that this mascot is detrimental to our town and the people in it, all people of color and white people. So, I ask you to please retire then. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak, please, ma'am? And did you, sir? Did you want to speak?
Yeah, I have.
Come after her, if you can just let, I can't see you when you're out the door, but after this woman, thank you.
My name is Aliyah Salmeroli, I'm a resident of North Haven. My daughter is, um, in a rich school. I'm a Native American Hopi tribe descent and African-American descent, um. I have spoken before, and I wanted to give you, you, I know you've heard all of the statistics, you've heard all of the, the evidence, I don't need to repeat that. So, I even had a whole thing prepared, and I tossed it. So, I'm just gonna tell you how I came to my decision, because if you would have asked me ten years ago, I would have told you I had no problem with the name. As a Native woman, I had no problem. And this has been an evolution for me when meeting one of my tribal elders. Um, I'm, I'm a nurse, um, I, I am a leadership in nursing. And I met one of my tribal elders as a cancer patient. And she immediately knew by looking at me that I was one of the same tribe, and she said, you, you are Hopi. And I said, yes, I am, I am Hopi. And we got to talking, and we were just talking about, somehow, after several weeks, because she'd been in the hospital, we started talking about the mascots, and what does that mean? And I'm like, it doesn't, it's a name, it doesn't really bother me. My high school was the Indians, you know, we, we did that, and it's, it's a name, so what is the purpose? And she was very kind to me, and wasn't upset with me, but spent the next two months of her life educating me on why that name was important. And she said, the whole fact that we're using this term is because that term was used to erase our history. Because you are not Indian, they are, they are wonderful, lovely people. Because you are not Indian, they're they're wonderful lovely people from India, but you are Hopi. And they are Quinipiac and, you know, they're Meschonuket Pequants, so there's many different tribes. And I have as much relation to a Quinipiac as uh somebody from Senegal has to a Norwegian. It's very different, you know, we're very different people. And they use that name to try to break us apart, cause it's easier when all of these people have land. It's hard to conquer a hundred and thirty-six nations, but you can conquer one. So they use that name to unify us as one people that they needed to put into schools and and reform and to make grander than they were, because they were low people, but we could get them educated as if there was something wrong with us, and it was seen as a grand thing. See, we're helping these people become better, except the fact that we were wonderful as we were. Um, and that that erased our history, that erased our names, that erased who we were. And I know that, like, they, ma'am, and I I thank you for speaking, and I did listen to everything you had to say. And I do believe that you and I are fighting the same battle, but on opposite sides, because we both feel so strongly about history and heritage and not forgetting that, and and I I am very cognizant of that, and I am grateful that you you do see it as supporting the natives and that's important to you, and that that is a positive step. I I will give you that, and seeing that after all these generations, that it didn't mean anything to me, was her proof. That's because your history has been diluted and thrown out that you don't even know. And still, it was hard for me to to reconcile this and to change this, you know, change doesn't happen overnight, it's something that you think about. And, you know, before she went onto hospice, she did tell me, even if you still don't find a problem with this, if it doesn't bother you because you are so removed and you didn't know your history, the fact that it bothers most of us, what kind of leader are you? You want to go into leadership? Why does that not bother you? And that's the part that bothers me now. I have spent my time at Citadel Military College of South Carolina, and I'm very proud of that fact, and at the Citadel, they did tell me we have three core values, honor, duty, and respect. My whole family military history. And it is my responsibility as a nurse leader, as a community leader, and as probably the only Hopi in this town, to fight for those who are not here, the Quinipiac to fight for themselves, to give that history to others, to stand with them, whether or not it affects me in any way, shape, or form, that's, it is my duty to do so, to respect that honor. And that is why I strongly feel about abolishing this mascot and everything about it. I have an eight-year-old girl, and she is as fair as you can be, because her father has some Irish heritage, and that's the part that she got. So I have a very light-skinned little McLaughlin little girl, and she is very cognizant of what this means in her heritage. And she was told that you'll never have a problem because you're white passing. And you know what? They're not wrong. She won't have a problem because her last name is McLaughlin and she is white passing. And in some ways, I am grateful for that because she won't have a problem. What was worse is that her problem isn't here, and she knows that it's wrong, and she hates that term, because I educated her the way I was educated. And I think that, and she knows that it hurts other Native children. And we watched these things, and we went online, and we looked at them, and she knows what that word means now, and that it was done to erase our history, and she said, but I but I'm still Hopi. Yeah, you are, you are Hopi, and there's nothing that's going to change that. And to put children who are Native, and there are many children who are Native, who go to these schools, into that position, if it hurts one child, isn't that enough? Isn't that what leadership and duty and respect is? To protect the children, I think as community leaders, this is what we have to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir?
Uh, Scott Lehman, I I live in town. Um, I wasn't gonna talk tonight, but I was, I'm out here in the hall, and I was just wandering into some speakers, and I I noticed the latest issue of The North Haven Citizen, and on the front page, uh, DTC says Indian mascot must go, and here it is, the logo. So we retired the logo back in May. It's gonna stay with us until the whole thing is gone.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, um, we're gonna start wrapping up the comments, but please go ahead, I just wanna see if there's anybody else in the back after after you're done, Ross.
Thank you, I'm Rob Mashup, and I've spoken before, and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak again. Um, and for those of you who don't know me, I'm a psychologist and I'm a researcher, professor at Yale School of Medicine. So I've tried to focus my comments on the research and science of things to kind of provide um a unique perspective. Um, so I'm gonna try to do that and come from s- some slightly, a slightly different angle. I wanna say also how much I appreciate this Board of Ed and how much time and energy and thought you've put into this process, and this has been a long process that goes back to two thousand fifteen in a formal way and decades before that. I think what's super interesting here is that what's taking place in this room, in this town of North Haven, is a microcosm of what is actually happening in towns all across the country, um, especially this past year. Um, so we are both unique because we all love North Haven. I live here, I have two children, my one son spoke. Um, but in other ways, we are not unique. Um, this entire country was Native American land, and um issues in terms of land being um taken away and Native American people um being affected by colonization and disease and migration and forced migration affected the entire country. And there, um, I'm a member of the American Psychological Association, which is the larger, largest um association for um social science research. They put out a resolution in two thousand five citing research that um demonstrated uh the detrimental effects of Native American mascots. And since that time, there's been quite a few studies that have more directly shown the effects of these mascots and um and how they are detrimental to students. I want to, I would, I said I wanted to talk about something unique that I haven't spoken about before. Um, I wanna talk directly about the concept of a referendum and whether we should open this up to the entire town. Um, of which the current research is specifically directed to people who have decision-making responsibility um with regard to the educational system and our children's lives. Um, the research has shown the specific impact that these mascots have on children who are required, not required, I mean, they have to get an education, right? So they are in an educational setting where they are exposed to these mascots, and they don't have a choice but to be exposed to these mascots, and then what is the effect on these children? Um, so I don't think it's fair for us to say that everybody in town gets to make a decision. I think that this is a decision that's supposed to be made by um politicians who take into account um research and by um superintendents and Board of Education, um, and and people like that and educators. So what that research has shown, it's looked at the effects directly on Native American students, on non-Native American students, and on students of other ethnic minority groups and what those effects are. And they have demonstrated across the board, people have somewhat positive feelings about these mascots, which is strange, yet when they go and they do these studies, they show that it affects the self-esteem of Native American students. It affects how their sense of community belonging, it affects their sense of what they wanna be and their aspirations. Um, and uh what is so interesting is that I read that as a scientist, and then I come to a forum like this, and we get to hear Wendy Marx's remarks, we get to hear Thais Moore's remarks, specifically how it affected them as children or affects their children and other people who've spoken out today. It also affects non-Native American children who are in the dominant culture. It actually makes them feel bad on measures of depression, on measures of distress. And why is that? Because the feeling is, well, if you're going to make fun of one group, then that means that that's close to me, and that can come to me, and it makes people feel bad that another group is being made fun of. And then, most importantly, what we know is that when children are exposed to these things, they are more likely to hold stereotypical beliefs about other ethnic minority groups, Native American groups or other groups, in in particular, um, Asian-American stereotypes. Um, there's this very, very specific study looking at this. And so I think that this is not something that is a town vote, this is not a public opinion, this is based on research. And what I've tried very hard to do is to bring the best, most current evidence-based research to this board, to leadership, to share this, um, because I know that you want to do what is in the best interest and what is most current for our students, and I think having this opportunity here to hear from so many people too about what the what the individual effect is, not just on the group level, the research study is so important to make it um uh to make it meaningful to to people. I appreciate so much everything that everything you shared and everything you've done, everything you've done, Anita. It's incredible. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, as usual, I've gone over, well over the allotted time for comments. Um, is there another person I see back there? I'm sorry, if you'd like to speak, and you have not spoke with us before. Okay, thank you.
What I'm talking to me, my name is Kevah Washington. I am a not-cured student at North Haven Public Schools. I've sent to new schools mainly because of mascot. Um, I can tell you one incident in second grade, or first grade, when we were learning about Christopher Columbus. And said that there were no more Native Americans, or in this term Indians. But obviously, we're here, and not only were they not here, but we could say whatever we wanted about them. Christopher Columbus was a hero hero for erasing them, and since I went up to my teacher and said, that's not true, like, at all, I was told to make my own curriculum. And I understand that North Haven wants to honor Native American tribes, but this is not the way to do it. Um, there are two, I'm currently repping uh RED for Murdered Missing Indigenous Women. Um, you can teach about that, um, boarding schools, um, they've just discovered millions of children that were dead. At boarding schools, you can teach about that, so I ask that you please change the name and the imagery of should needs to go. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And then we'll have, I know, Joan, I did tell you, you can speak again, let this woman speak, cause she hasn't spoke, and then you'll be our last speaker.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
One of my queer women. Ms. Salas, my name is Dana Jackson Washington. I am a current resident of North Haven. I am also a former lifelong student of North Haven. Um, I have a family who has been raised in North Haven. I come from four generations of people who have lived in North Haven, um, along many other ancestors who have lived in North Haven. The only one thing I'll say is that you spoke in your paper about asking the tribes to do a pardon for the eighty-seven thousand dollars, yeah. So I'm currently a representative of my tribe, the Wabacacet, um, we are Wabacacet, um, Wabacacet, Azanamisco, and Chavona Gungamang. I can tell you as an authorized member of my tribe, the answer's no. I can tell you as an authorized member of a sister tribe from the Pequants and the Mohicans, we have sent letters, we have gone to different school boards, we have spoken at the state capital, we have made our position in writing. The answer is no. So, we applaud you and thank you for your many, many efforts in this discussion with the mascot. I think my position is pretty, you know, obvious, along with my family, that we definitely applaud, um, oppose the mascot, the name and imagery. Words count. Words count, there are many, many, many detrimental words that we choose not to use even in our own family. Words matter. My daughter actually wasn't gonna speak tonight, so I'm very proud of her for speaking because of the torment that she's received just from speaking out. The first time we were in this room, I think she came up to about my head, and now she's towering uh with me. So the time has flown, flown by, but I can tell you right now that her response right now is evidence of how painful this is. It's painful to our family, it's painful to our community, it's painful to our culture. I ask you, I implore you, to please make the right decision. Leave no child behind, every child matters, dead or alive, and we ask you to please make the right decision. Because we don't need to have more reactions like this, and we don't need to have your children suffering and your child suffering, and all the other Native and non-Native children within our community suffering. It's not fair to them, so as adults, please make the right decision.
Thank you. Joan?
After listening to everyone's comments, you know, right or wrong, there is no right or wrong, everybody has their opinion, like we have our opinion. But I still, and would like to say that I still feel the only fair way to go about this is to include some of the twenty-three thousand seven hundred and some people who don't go online. A lot of seniors do not, are not computer literate, and any decision that affects a whole town and school system that the entire town contributes to. I don't have children in school, in fact, my son Robert graduated ninety-two with Dennis, I deserve. And he played sports with her, he was quite well good. He played sports with her, and maybe it was in the year ninety-two, it was a beautiful year. We didn't know harassment, we didn't know of anything. She was a good athlete, they were all good athletes, that was Robert and Sarah. And he talked well at dance, but um, I, that was, that was then. But now, seeing as how this is a town, this is a town-wide issue, and seeing as how every person in this town contributes to your Board of Education, I don't have children in this system. Why am I paying into it? I don't begrudge it. My kids were educated, and all the children are getting educated, and all of one hand washes the other. But this is a very unfair way to go go about it, and I still feel, even if it's just to see what do people in town think. I think you're brave, which would be common sense, that if everyone in the town voted, maybe the decision might not go the way you want it. Maybe it would, maybe it wouldn't, but the opinions of all of you told, and they're very good opinions. Everybody who's who's here, you know, has their opinion, as well as myself, and I think I think it very unfair. And as I said, this is a democracy, and we should treat this like a democracy. This isn't something that's just happening in the little corner of the universe, and I still have a very strong opinion about principles and the superintendent, because I knew nothing about this harassment until I started reading. Why haven't they come forward? Why haven't the students been protected? If, I mean, or who who is the person that are harassing these children? And why haven't hasn't the school, God, I mean, if you if you if you put a piece of paper in somebody in my son's day, it's throwing out of class. I mean, I don't understand this, why there has not been a committee of teachers, individuals, whoever, to help help whoever's been harassed and why? I mean, it's just not fair. It isn't fair anyway, it is not fair to not include the entire town in um on the on the vote for the mascot and the Indian name, whether whether it's to be or not to be. I think everyone, and in democracy, I say it again, everyone should be included. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
You have a hand up here.
Anita, there was one more, there was one more hand up. Oh, I'm sorry, the Jackson.
I'm asking the question, was anyone left out of this invitation?
I'm sorry, what was on this, Jackson? Anyone left out of this invitation?
Does anyone left out of this invitation to be here?
No. No, no, we have had-
Okay, so then, public, the the people who haven't-
We have had, um-
Apparently are not interested, or whatever, uh, those interested are here, uh, including a lady here. We all, we all are here because we were, we were given an invitation. I personally was not coming, but I thought I'd like to see how the town meetings go. And um I really believe that when you think about including the town, once you invite them, you can't force them, can't break people into into numbers and make them come when they are not interested. Can't break people into, into numbers and make them come when they are not interested. But of those that are interested, I think we've gotten a reasonable uh, display of what common sense really can do when it sits down. These are intelligent people, all, creative people, all. All can do their part to make this a better town. And little things like that, like your imagery, your, these are things of the past. And they've evolved. They've evolved to where we are today. And they can be improved and they can be better, as was mentioned before, than they have been. And I think this is a great town. I appreciate um, my neighbors' comments. But if they're invited, they don't show, you can't push it.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, everyone. Um, for, you had one more thing to say, Mr. Jackson?
I'll make this quick. Um, what I failed to point out is that I'm a graduate of UConn Radcliffe Hicks School of Ag, and so are all my children. They all have a, a college degree from UConn with no scholarships. I didn't have a scholarship. I was able to pay for that by mowing lawns and trimming shrubs. Not my father or mother had the, the capacity financially to do that. And I, I'm, I'm proud of that fact, but um, we also did the largest landscape construction jobs in New England. We worked in New York, New Jersey. We got the highest rates simply because we're, we're less than ninety miles outside of New York City. And New York has the highest union rates than any, um, anyone else in the, in the United States. And we were able to come under that umbrella.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point that out. It was not something that we did easily. It was because of a lot of hard work and uh, well, we, I'm proud of that, that I did.
You should. Okay, I'll just, I'll wait for, um, Goldie to come back. Just take a breather for a few minutes and um, I'll make a statement and then we will go. Can we go to the bathroom? Anita, can we run to the bathroom?
Okay. Oh, never mind. Okay.
No. Okay, ladies, we're, we're gonna, um, resume. Um, so before, um, we go on, I'd just like to say this. Tonight, this board will take a vote on whether we should retire our Indian name and move forward along with our students, community, and local tribe input to find a new logo to represent the longstanding tradition of honoring North Haven's Native American peoples in our sports program. This vote does not come lightly. Together as a board and individually, we have put in countless hours of research and dialogue. We have heard the public speak on both sides of this issue and understand the passion many have for our town's history. Tonight, when we vote, each member of this board will be voting for what they believe is right for our students and school community. We will not be making our decision based on political parties, threats of being sued, or financial repercussions. Our votes are for what we as individual board members feel is the right thing to do for our sto- students' social and emotional wellness. I ask that however this vote should turn out, that the republic respects the decision of the board and we move forward together as a community. Thank you. So now we can move on to a, a discussion concerning the retirement of the North Haven Public Schools mascot name. Does anyone have, the board?
Do, do we, do we have a motion?
I'm gonna do a discussion.
Okay.
And then we'll go into our motion.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Uh, there. Um, oh, all right, you're right, actually. You're right. I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
I almost stepped out of board, out of line. Um. So the motion to the board is that the Board of Education. Okay, I just need to look, look at this for a second. Um, I think we need to have a discussion and then we move on to our board. And then we can have a second discussion. So our discussion is, you know, where do we wanna go? And do we wanna make that motion that I, um, that I was just ready to say? So I want to know if there's any further, um, discussion with the Board of Education along members. So, can you take your mask off when you speak?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, yeah, thinking this issue over the last, really, twenty years because we've had discussions about changing mascot imagery and, um, practices at games. And, um, I'm, I'm, I view this issue several ways. I mean, I think of it as a senior citizen. I think of it as a town resident from nineteen seventy-four. I think of it as a mother of two adult children who are second generation going through our school systems. Out through, and as a, a teacher, especially a teacher for twenty-five years. So I've had a lot of time to think about this and I realize change is difficult, especially in times of real upheaval, which has been for most people the last eighteen months. But to me, it comes down to two questions. And the question is, is our mascot bringing our town together? And from what I can see over the last five or six years, that definitely has not been the case. It's dividing us. Um, and that's a concern. Uh, the other thing, in taking a look at all the materials and doing the readings, which are all scientifically-based reports and the data by reputable places, the National Congress of American Indians, American Psychological Association, Association, as well as statements by the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights. To me, the findings are very overwhelming. Reporting of the use of Native American names and imagery are offensive and harmful to, to our students. And we've heard this through current and, and recent graduates. And matter of fact, we've had emails from students saying they're embarrassed to go off to college by current mascot, uh, by our, our mascot. As educators, as educational leaders, do we not have that responsibility to make change when we think that students are being harmed? Um, the second issue is that the Native Americans that are living in Connecticut, which are not necessarily the Quinnipiacs because they moved out a long time ago, but the Pequots, the Mohegans, the Golden Hill, um, um, uh, tribe have all been united in asking for the towns to stop using the term Indians. And I guess as a teacher and as a mother, I would say to my students and to my children, if somebody asks you to stop because you're causing them harm or discomfort, then you need to stop. The, the, the Native Americans are asking us to stop. And if we are to honor and respect them, we as adults who are also role models, should we not do the same? That's, I'm not gonna have to.
Does anyone else have anything to say?
The only thing I really wanted to say is, um, is very general, just thank you to everybody who's in this room tonight. There've been various opinions, differing sides of, of, of what everybody thinks should or should not happen. It was all kept very respectful, um, which in the past has not happened, even during this current year and a half or so. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. This attended for, this, this and what's happened here tonight is really what the best part of town government is about. And that's people coming out, speaking their piece and doing it in a respectful and a responsible fashion. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Anita?
Um, so we can't really know how it feels to walk in someone else's shoes until we take a deep breath and muster the courage to take the first step. So many people here in North Haven have reached out and offered us an opportunity to live for just five minutes in your shoes. Although I had a much easier time walking in some shoe, some shoes compared to others, I did put on each and every metaphorical shoe. People on both sides of the mascot issue have reached out. Every email, every attachment, every data point and every opinion has been read. We spent additional time doing our own research and watching documentaries, attending forums, reaching out to tribal leaders and seeking native voices to gain further understanding and perspective. Over the course of my tenure on the board, no other topic, including a once-in-a-century pandemic, has garnered even a fraction of the communication that I have received from my neighbors and my friends about the mascot. We're neighbors. I'm on Renee.
Oh.
Um, so I'd like to thank from the bottom of my heart, everyone who has spoken out on this topic. Um, I think it's really important to hear from you. Now, in my opinion, it's time to vote. And four things come into my mind. First and most important is I think we have a moral imperative, in my opinion, based on the emails that we've gotten, the public comments that we've listened to from current and former students, community members, tribal leaders and faith leaders. Second is the scientific and academic imperative, based on the American Psychological Association's recommendation for all schools to retire the mascot due to proven harm, as well as the myriad supporting studies that we have all read. Third is, I think there is a legal imperative, as the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities and Connecticut State Statute ten dash four A has made clear. And fourth is the financial imperative. I think that we need to vote and vote tonight. Any one of my four imperatives is reason enough for me, but taken together, it is crystal clear why I encourage us all to take a deep breath and muster the courage to take this next step together. I'd like to thank each and every one of my colleagues on the board for a respectful and good-faith discussion. We keep the well-being of our students at the center of everything we do. And even when we come from things at different angles, we always try to see each other's sides. I wanna say thank you to Anita, our leader, for showing real leadership over the course of this past year. Like, we don't always agree on stuff, but I think you're awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did.
I have something to say.
Um, I don't have, uh, much to say that hasn't been said before in many emails, conversations and workshops. Um, but I did have a couple of final thoughts that I wanted to share as we bring this issue to a close. Um, our charge as elected members of the Board of Education is consistently review our educational systems, policies and practices and to ensure that all of our students and the, all the students in our care feel understood and respected for all of their diverse beliefs, cultures, backgrounds, abilities and perspectives. And we also have an obligation to help our students to mature into independent, reasoning and responsible individuals who adapt construction, constructively to an ever-changing, multicultural world. As we as a district work to facilitate the development of those skills within our students and as elected leaders in our community, we have to model those ourselves. As a board, despite the divisiveness of the topic and the challenges that inevitably accompany change, we have worked together to reflect on everything the mascot symbolizes for all of our students. We've discussed intent versus impact, cultural appreciation versus cultural appropriation, and how to preserve our town's history, but with accuracy and respect. We've acknowledged the unintentional yet profound negative impact the native mascot has on people within our community and beyond, and we've collaborated to seek a solution. This very process exemplifies the skills our students need to succeed long after they leave our district. By selecting a mascot and a team name that unifies rather than divides or that allows all students to proudly support it, we afford our students the opportunity to be judged solely on their actions and talents rather than on an emblem that no longer serves the purpose for which it was selected. I am profoundly grateful to everyone who has been a part of this conversation, regardless of your point of view. Your willingness to be vulnerable and to share your personal stories, to educate and inform us, and to create an impassioned dialogue has really been a gift. And I've grown tremendously through this process over the past six years. And I look forward to working with my Board of Ed colleagues to consistently evaluate our educational systems to ensure that they respect and honor all of our students.
Okay, so there's a motion before me, which I will read out loud. And it says, "At the Board of Education hereby moves to retire the use of the Indian mascot name effective Wednesday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. In pursuit of a new mascot and/or imagery, image, imagery, the board further moves to review its options to seek tribal consent in accordance with Public Act twenty-one dash two in an effort to find a mascot name and/or imagery that honors and preserves North Haven's traditions and histories." May I have a, a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? I didn't get a vote. Okay, with that, the motion passes. We thank each and every one of you for your time. We thank you for your input. Um, and as I said in my statement, I. I ask that the public please respect the decision of the board and together we can move forward to find something new to honor and preserve North Haven's tradition and history. Thank you all. May I have a motion to adjourn the July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one special meeting of the Board of Ed?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. The meeting is.